All right, we're going to call the meeting to order at 7:32 at this point. Ask them to please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we're going to grant Wes Cat permission to videotape the meeting and ask if anyone else wishes to record the meeting this evening?
Yes.
Any objection?
No.
Nope, no objection. Okay, thank you. All right, so our chairman's update. We're going to do, just remind people two things first. First, that the Roy London Humanitarian Award, the town is still accepting nominations. If you know an individual, a group of individuals, and/or organizations in town that you think should be recognized, please contact the selectman's office and speak with Christine. Nomination forms are available also in last week, Westwood Press, and also at Town Hall and Carby Street and the library. And the same for the John J. Cronin Public Service Award. It is presented each year to an individual who has made an outstanding contribution, which has impacted the community of Westwood. The award is named after the late John J. Cronin, town treasurer, who for many years selfishly gave of his time and forbearment of the community, both as an elected official and in numerous volunteer activities. To recognize the same spirit of the community involvement as exemplified by John Cronin's life, the town selects an individual annually to receive this award. Forms can be downloaded to the town's website, under news, or picked up at Town Hall or the library. Nomination forms should also be sent to Christine McCarthy at the selectman's office by April 1st. And we also would like to make sure that the public is aware we are having proposed community meetings for the police headquarters. They are this Thursday, March 10th, 2016, at 7:30 PM in the Downey School Cafeteria. The second meeting will be on Thursday, March 24th, 2016, at the Thurston Middle School Cafeteria. So both the 10th and the 24th, there will be presentations about the proposed police headquarters. And now, going backwards, we would like to take this time to recognize town employees who have been here for 25 years, and I have the pleasure of doing the first two. So firstly, Pam Dukeman, our finance director, who is here. Yes, when Pam came to us in 1991, she was Pamela Murray. She was introduced to the Board of Selectmen as a candidate for a part-time position as a budget analyst. In 1993, she was reintroduced to the board as the newly-created finance director position. And according to the notes here, she was likened to Magic Johnson, who some may recall was a basketball player at some point in time. Over 25 years with the town of Westwood, she has been in municipal. Finance operations have evolved from an operation that primarily functioned with accounting ledgers to a highly efficient and effective computerized operations, and that manages all of the town's financial affairs. She has a great staff, including Maria O'Leary, Sheila Ne, Debbie Robbins, Kathy Foley, and formerly Patricia Conley. And through all of their work, they have achieved a AAA bond rating. Pam and her staff have received repeated praise from the auditors as the most organized and comprehensive financial management team that it has as clients. Pam's financial presentations, which accumulate her annual PowerPoint at town meeting, has been praised by everyone, extremely comprehensive, and fully easy to understand. In her 25 years of public service, her staff has guided the town to the most enviable achievement of true fiscal balance and stability related to the town's long-range financial planning and condition. The town has achieved an operational level of capital investments and reserves that can be expected to see the town through any reasonable financial shocks. Pam lives in town with her husband, Stephen, and her two children, both Ryan and Emily. So Pam, congratulations. Come on up. Sheila, too? Why, you guys don't want to come up individually, you want to come up together?
They do everything together.
I know 25 years together would make you do that, so. And see, as Pam's already introduced, Sheila Ne is our second 25-year recipient. She began working in 1991, where she served as the Financial Commission Administrator. She was responsible for coordinating the activities and meetings for the Finance Commission, served as a liaison to the FinCom, to the school and town departments, and preparing the annual town meeting warrant book that is mailed to every home in Westwood. Sheila has been consistently praised by the finance members and the commission and the chairman, and has worked with for her reliability, professionalism, and attention to detail, and her good nature. Notable achievements during her time with the FinCom include significant enhancements to the annual town meeting book, and the creation of the annual new members training workshop for new members of the FinCom. Sheila's role at the town has expanded to include serving as a financial analyst, which includes supporting the finance director and finance departments. As Sheila said, Pam is now her boss. She has provided high-quality support for many assignments, including helping with the annual budget preparation, financial presentations, OPED issues, and other assignments. Sheila is perhaps most famous for the high-quality financial presentation which she produces. Everyone in town has seen at least one of her financial presentations, whether at town meeting, or a budget meeting, or a selectman meeting, and Sheila's skills have resulted in such a high quality of presentations. She's been living in, well, after living in Westwood for 40 years, she decided to move with her husband Marty to Dennis. So Sheila, congratulations.
We're going to bring you all up together.
Can we just say one quick thing?
Uh-oh, they're stealing the show.
Sheila and I started together, and we've been working the finance team for 25 years. And we know that, you know, you can't survive that long in municipal government without a great team. So we really wanted to bring in our team tonight, and we have so many members here with us. Lee Anne Cotay, Kathy Foley, Jim Gavin from the Treasurer's Office, and Pat Conley, formerly from the Treasurer's Office with her husband, Bill, and Maria O'Leary, town accountant. We have Lisa Champa, and Mary Ann Cardy, and Maureen Lade, and Mark Murphy from the Assessor's Office, and did I mention Jim Gavin from the Treasurer's Office? Giannis Poland, and Louisa Pizzano from the Collector's Office, Phil Shapiro, who's done everything. Have I left anyone out? We really just, you know, we know how great it's been to work with this team, and we go way back. I mean, Phil was on the FinCom when we started, and Jim, and Mark Murphy, and Maureen, all came from the FinCom, and then this staff has just been so terrific to work with. So we really just wanted to make sure to recognize this team and all that they've done for the town in the financial area. They're just such great people, and so dedicated to the town, and really have done such great work for 25 years. So we're so happy that they could all.
But we don't have clocks for all of you, sorry.
Jim, all you.
Deflect as she may try. Okay, so it's my pleasure to announce the next 25-year recognition. It's for Lee Hardy, and she's not able to be here tonight, but nonetheless, we want to recognize her service. She's the Administrative Assistant in the Police Department. Lee started her service with the town in 1991, seems to be a trend here for the 25th year, working for the school department, and she was there until 1999. And in that year, she transferred to the police department and has worked as the Administrative Assistant and Office Manager to the Chief of Police since that time. Lee is the backbone of the administrative support staff and assists with everything from payroll, to accounts payable, accounts receivable, to sensitive personnel issues. Making a career of working silently behind the scenes, she has provided invaluable assistance, not only to the chief, but to the entire staff at the police department as well. Her concern for others is rivaled only by her work ethic. She is a critical player on the team of workers for the police department. She's married to her husband, Tim, has two grown children, and now is the proud grandmother of two grandchildren. So Chief, I know you're here to also recognize Eladio. Please send her our congratulations for her long service to the community, and we hope there are many more years ahead.
Thank you, sir. While she's in Florida, I tried to offer to switch with her, and if she could pick out the award, and I would go hold her place on vacation, but.
It didn't work that way.
Didn't work that way. Thank you for recognizing.
How about a little applause for Lee?
It's my distinct privilege and honor to announce that Officer Eladio Sanchez has now done 25 years of service to the town of Westwood. He came to the police department by way of Lexington, then Newton, and respectively where he started his career as a police officer in 1983. In addition to various patrol duties, Officer Sanchez serves as a hostage negotiator and advanced communicator for MetroLEC, which is the Metropolitan Boston Law Enforcement Council, which is an elite group of police officers throughout the state who are formed to share resources and assist in times of need. In addition to his community service as a police officer, Officer Sanchez is well-known for his coaching youth soccer, which he did for almost 15 years. In that role, Officer Sanchez mentored hundreds of children, providing guidance not only as a coach, but as a community role model. And as I recall, he was a varsity coach for a few years after a drive spell, took him to the playoffs for the first time in many years, and kept him there while he served as coach. Officer Sanchez has received recognition for his work on numerous occasions, and is well-respecting as a caring, competent, and compassionate member of our police department. He is the proud father of three sons, and the loving companion to his partner, Barbara. And he is a great resource to our community, and we're lucky to have him for these times. Let's give Officer Sanchez a.
So we could have the three recipients come up for a photo?
Eladio, have them stand with all of you.
Sheila?
Sheila, where are you in Dennis?
Officer Sanchez?
Officer Sanchez.
Well, you're not too far from me.
Really?
Yeah.
How are we going to do this, guys?
I was going to say, do you want to come over here?
Yeah, they're chair this morning.
It's not very spacious in this room. Okay. One, two, three. I'm going to take one more. One, two, three.
One, two, three?
Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Is that John? Is that people who started?
Look us up, I'm always on that barrier, all right?
You got to start first. You don't know, you don't know, it's not what you. There's always scandalous in my house.
All right, so we've done everything on that.
Go.
Go.
Who is it?
My wife. Okay, go. Take over for her.
Pam, you should have quit while you were ahead.
We always clear the room when we started.
Once they knew the financial was coming, they all headed for the door. So, do we need to queue this up?
No.
No, okay.
We just need a little bit of quiet.
I know, one second.
Can't close it, Jen.
No, I'll, you just got to move them along.
Because only Christine can.
All right. So Pam, you would like to update us on the budget?
Just have a very brief update, just kind of, you know, where we are and what we've done since your last meeting. So since the last meeting, we have produced both the municipal budget detail book and the town overall summary book. And we've distributed those to everybody involved in the budget process, as well as put that on the town's website. So that's available for anyone to access and take a look at. And I just want to point out that that summary budget book, it really contains information on the FY '17 budget, but as well as it has so much comprehensive information on our overall finances. Sheila and I kind of started that many years ago. We found that as kind of new members came on FinCom or Board of Selectmen members, people would ask a lot of questions, you know, what's the history of the town's override? How does Prop 2.5 work? Tell me about the tax bill. How much do we get in state aid? Questions like that. And we found it was easiest to kind of put it all in one spot, so that people could access that whenever they'd like. So it's a great spot for people to take a look, and really, you can see a lot of information on the town's finances. The other thing we've done since the last meeting is, we did go into the Finance Commission meeting, and we did go through an extensive report with them. We went through a lot of financial material, and Mike was there, it was quite long. We went through all the material that we've gone through at the selectmen's meetings. So we really spent a great deal of time with them, and went through all of the budget information and our overall finance information, really made sure that we, you know, had time to go through and answer any questions that they might have about that. Just a couple of quick things, feedback from that meeting. When we talked about the tax relief that the selectmen were proposing, there were a couple of differences of opinions among the FinCom on where we were with that, with some members thinking that, yes, that relief proposed would be welcome relief to residents, and other members saying that they would rather the town kind of not pass along that relief, but address that money towards capital projects. So really, some good discussion about that. That's similar to some of the discussion we've had in other meetings talking about that, and I think it's probably like what a discussion we need to have with the town. And as we go forward to town meeting, it's a good discussion to have with the town. I think just the one other item at the meeting, something that came up, was a concern that a little bit where we are right now in the budget process, that we currently have some budget requests that exceed what our current proposals are. And I just want to point out that really, that's always where we are at this point in the budget. You know, there are always requests that exceed what we're proposing to do with funds, whether that's the school budget, the municipal budget, or the capital budgets. They typically are above where we're at with the proposals at this point in the budget, and we always continue to work the budget process, and as things change and evolve as we work towards town meeting. So that's really not anything unusual. In the 25 years we've been here and done 25 years of budgeting, I can tell you that the proposals always exceed, you know, what we're talking about and allocating, and that's part of our process, is to keep working that until we get further, closer to town meeting. And then just the one other item, we do have a long-range meeting Wednesday night, and we'll be finishing up the capital budget with that group, and able to bring you forth next Monday night, the recommendations for the capital budget articles, or at least what we have at this point. So that's really where we are with the process, and we'll continue to kind of work on the budget, move it forward, and come in and update you at each point.
In general, what feedback did you get from the Finance Commission on your, on the information of the municipal budget?
They really hadn't looked at that too much in general. We had to clarify that that budget now was at a 3.7% increase, down from the original request. And if you remember, that was the process last year. You know, often the requests come in higher, because there's lots that our departments would like to do for the community. So I think they were pleased to see where that budget request was now, and understood that that had come down and was in line with the allocation.
I have none.
Anything else? Thank you, Pam.
Good work, Pam, as always.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving along, I see Mr. Miller is here, which can only mean must be an alcohol license involved. Evening, Counselor, how are you? Hi, Janice.
Good evening. So just to give a brief update since the last time, we were before the selectmen to discuss Blue Orchid. Back in December of 2015, the selectmen renewed Blue Orchid's license for 2016 to, for wine and malt beverage license only. And that approval was contingent upon the ABCC's approval, and the ABCC rejected Blue Orchid's request for a wine and malt beverage license.
Can we take a time?
You're not going to like the answer.
Not a news bulletin. Why did the ABCC reject that?
So, we're not sure.
Probably because they've never heard of it happening before.
Well, I can honestly say I've never heard someone going from the all-alcohol to a beer and wine.
Well, there's new experiences every day in life, aren't there?
Right, in the 40 years or so. So clearly, the ABCC gave Janice a procedure that didn't really exist. The good news is that the ABC renewed the all-alcohol license as it stood.
And now they want it, I understand that. But Counselor, you and I have discussed this philosophy many times before. I have a problem with an agency that gives us a procedure, and then we follow the procedure, and they reject it.
So I think there's a few maybe newer people up there that took it upon themselves to create procedures that didn't really exist. I wish I could speak for the ABCC.
I'm glad you don't.
It would make things a lot easier for everybody.
But I'm glad you don't, I'm glad you speak for us.
And so the very good news in dealing this with Janice on this is that, which would have been a real disaster if the ABCC didn't renew the all-alcohol license, because then we'd really be looking at a real problem. So the town now could.
This is absurd. I mean, in all seriousness, it's absurd that they gave us, I'm venting, if it isn't clear, that they gave us a procedure.
Don't take this personally.
Yes, that they gave us a procedure, we followed the procedure, and thank you for doing that, Janice, to the letter of the law, and then they reject what we did. I am deeply troubled by an agency in Boston doing that to a local organization that takes guidance from them and then rejects it, so.
You done?
Yeah, for now.
So you need us to take the phone?
My suggestion would be to rescind your vote.
I'm not rescinding my vote.
Of December, which would, to change it to a, from all-alcohol to malt and wine, which would then be consistent with the ABCC records. And then I guess there's some other pending items that were put off for another hearing.
Okay, I'm going to have fun with this one. I'm not sure yet either, but I'll be winging it. I move that with reluctance and frustration, the Board of Selectmen rescinds its vote of December 14th, 2015, where we agree to renew a license, but in this case, have it be for wine and malt beverages only. So we're going to rescind that. Reluctance and frustration.
Silence is deafening.
No, you don't. We could really make this confusing. Oh, my God.
I'll second it. Yeah, sure. You want more time to vent, go ahead.
No, I don't want more time to vent. I want the applicant to understand, this is nothing against them, I'm glad they're keeping their all liquor license, but I am concerned with the process and what went on here. And as a municipality, I am deeply concerned with the Alcohol and Beverage Commission doing what it, telling us what to do, and then doing something totally different once we do it. I find that extremely disturbing. We called for advice, so I'm going to vote against this rescinding that vote, because that vote happened, not because I don't want you to get your all liquor license. I'm making a political, oh, they're not here? All right, I'm just making a political.
They might be watching.
That's fine.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. And then we have, we don't have to do anything else with respect to this until our next meeting?
Actually, I think you need to now vote to renew the all-alcohol license. I move that we renew the all-alcohol license for Blue Orchid's operation.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Just for procedurally, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was this properly noticed?
Yes, from what I could see.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So then I'm going to move that we continue this public hearing until Monday, March 14th, 2016, at the selectmen's meeting on that date.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Procedure question, can they serve alcohol now?
Yes.
Okay. So the ABCC actually issued an all-alcohol license?
Well, they didn't issue it, they renewed it. We could go around, we could go around the circle for a while.
Yeah.
Janice, are they settling?
I'll say for the record, I'm not, I'm not really as disturbed, because I run into this a lot, where agencies tell you to do one thing and then do another, and that's why they call a law a practice, because it changes every day, so.
Is there a change in ownership that's taking place with this restaurant?
Yes. Katie Wong came to see me in early February, the first week in February, to say that they had concerns because downgrading their license really hurt their business in a very short amount of time, and they wanted to make some changes. And she did inform me that she and her sister, she was becoming the new president, a new officer. Some of that is still being worked out with their attorney. But her sister sold her stock back to B2B Concept, which is Blue Orchid's incorporated name, and David Ng will no longer be the manager once Katie takes over. He is functioning as the manager now, I did confirm with Katie on Friday, and that has to stay the same until all of their change in officers, stockholders, change of manager, all of that's approved by the ABCC.
So they're obviously having a conflict in the operations of the business and making changes, it would seem to make.
Yes, and they also, they didn't necessarily say conflict, but they did say they were making, they wanted to make some changes, and part of that was to also have an entertainment license, which will be coming before the board on the 14th, March 14th.
They want a TV in there?
TVs, yes.
Mr. Walsh, without due respect?
Yes, Mr. Walsh.
I believe the practice of law is an art, and doing it correctly the first time is, should be the goal of everyone, including agencies in Boston. And let the record reflect, this is the second time within a very short period of time that Boston has mandated stuff on our liquor licenses without our approval.
I hear there are more coming.
Great.
Yes, just so you know, am I correct, Mr. Miller, there are more coming?
Quite a bit.
Yes. Well, thank you. Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Luckily, I won't be here.
We'll certainly miss these discussions.
You're welcome to come as a member of GALLER.
Maybe I will, perhaps I will.
I haven't speak up.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, Steve.
Nice, too.
All right, next we have a public hearing for a CV license, Nora?
Actually, I'm going to present.
Janice, sorry.
This evening, I'd like you to introduce the Patel's, Redraxi, and Heaven Patel.
Hello, how good.
And they are opening a new sandwich shop at 135 University Ave called Witch Witch. And just a little bit of information about the location, the premises is 1,705 square feet, will have 48 seats, and will operate Monday through, Monday through Sunday, 11 to 9:00. And Mr. Patel will be the manager, Mrs. Patel is the owner of Record. They're applying for a CV license for their sandwich shop, which is, has become very popular since 2003, has now more than 300 locations, and their menu offerings include sandwiches made to order, chips, cookies, beverages. And as far as the licensing requirements for the town, the operation.
We'll certainly miss these discussions.
You're welcome to come as a member of the gallery.
Maybe, maybe I will, perhaps I will.
I haven't speak up.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you too, Steve.
Nice to see you.
All right, next we have a public hearing for a CV license, Nora?
Actually, I'm the last person.
Janice, sorry.
This evening I'd like you to introduce the Patel's, Redraxy, and Heaven Patel.
Hello, how good evening.
And they are opening a new sandwich shop at 135 University Ave called Witch Witch. And just a little bit of information about the location. The premises is 1,705 square feet. Will have 48 seats. And will operate Monday through, Monday through Sunday, 11 to 9. And Mr. Patel will be the manager. Mrs. Patel is the owner of record. They're applying for a CV license for their sandwich shop, which is, has become very popular since 2003. Has now more than 300 locations. And their menu offerings include sandwiches made to order, chips, cookies, beverages. And as far as the licensing requirements for the town, the operations, the establishment's still under construction.
Yep.
And I have been in touch with the building commissioner at University Station. And at this point, it's still rough, still very rough at the moment. So he mentioned, Mike Perkins, mentioned possibly mid-April. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, first week of April.
And we're asking, I'm asking that the board consider a CV license for Witch Witch pending cory check and of course, all the inspections of the town.
Questions?
So this is a franchise?
Yes.
Have you purchased? And have you done this before with that?
Yes, we have a store in a Somerville, Assembly Row Mall.
Oh, and how's that going?
It's going good. We opened that store last year, February.
So this is the second one in Massachusetts?
Second one in Massachusetts.
I know, because I'm thinking, I haven't heard that name before, but I haven't been to Assembly Square.
Yeah, this is the first store in New England. So we brought it here.
It starts from the south to here is a new.
Where's it based out of?
Dallas, Texas.
It's welcome to Westwood.
With those contingencies?
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you, good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck. What's your specialty sandwich there?
Thank you, turkey, then buffalo chicken.
Buffalo chicken, that sounds good.
We'll see you in April.
Janice, thank you.
Thank you, Janice. All right, so we have, moving along, we have our Complete Streets contract. So, since Mike is left, I will jump in here. So we were asked to authorize the chairman to sign the contract as the authorized signatory listing required by Mass DOT for the Department of Public Works to advance to the next step so the Complete Streets grant process. So we're currently requesting approval of Complete Streets with TEC in the amount of $33,200. TEC will provide planning to do the Complete Streets program, which would then be presented to the Complete Streets for funding. Is that correct?
Yeah, so this is just the first part. We need to do the prioritization plan to get to funding. So they'll do the prioritization plan with Tech, who will then turn around and give them a design. The DPW will work with them to talk about different areas of town that they want to focus on. And then they can apply for funding through the Complete Streets grant.
Any questions, Mr. Hearn, Mrs. Hyde?
I'll just comment, others are on the heel of applying, so it's good that we got this going.
Yes.
You're one of the first, yeah, we need to do this stuff.
Move approval?
Newton is ready to do it by June, from what I understand. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Snow and ice accounts, really. I think we need to have, and even on a good winter, it's, it'll have to add more money. Right. No, I think, I think we're doing pretty well. I'm telling you right now, I think the Groundhog was correct. Al Roco was wrong, but the, was right. All right, so we need to authorize the DPW to deficit spend up to $225,000 more pursuant to Chapter 44 and Section 31D.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, our streets will continue to be nice and clean. Westwood Little League Parade. That's all right. So we, Westwood Little League is looking for authorization to hold their parade on Saturday, April 30th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 at Morrison Field. They are looking for a permit for the parade.
Yeah, so they, we, I talked to police, fire, and DPW. Everyone's all set that the construction meeting for the fire station, they did talk to the contractors and ask them not to do any work that Saturday before noon. So if they were gonna do anything, they're just gonna hold off until after the parade is all set and done. Paul's Card's gonna make sure that the area is safe, because there's gonna be a lot of kids. So construction is already aware that they need to make sure fencing is correct, fencing is up.
That all the construction workers hate that. They'll be off Saturday morning until noon.
Okay, I move that we approve, are there any subject twos here?
Subject, yeah, subject to police, fire, and Board of Health.
But you said you contacted them.
We did, but they still have a.
Final sign off.
Final sign off. Okay. So I move approval subject to final sign offs by Westwood Police, Fire, and the Board of Health.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have approval for the Third Annual Westwood Cystic Fibrosis Rug Race to be held on?
Sunday, June.
June 18th. Thank you.
I don't know if it's a Sunday, but June 18th.
Yes, on June 18th, a walk-run fundraiser to raise money and awareness for cystic fibrosis. Alexis, what do you say?
Agirous.
Agirous, thank you, Nancy. A Westwood resident and senior at the Eisenberg School of Management at UMass Amherst.
Fine school it is.
Has done many fundraisers and events for cystic fibrosis, is looking to have the Third Annual.
It's a Saturday.
Uh, thank you, Nancy. Cystic Fibrosis Walk Run, it is a Saturday, as she said. Event to Westwood, it worked out very well the last two years with no reported problems.
Move approval.
Second.
Are we doing that subject to?
Yes, subject to all sign offs.
All sign offs, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so next we have our Norfolk County Mosquito Control Budget.
I move that we designate Mike Gillette as the person to sign for the declaration in support of the Norfolk County Mosquito Control's proposed budget.
I don't know, we've been very lucky to have no, too many Norfolk towns affected in the last couple of years.
Yes, and, and that's, I think, direct testament to their activities. And, you know, we have a new threat, and that's just triple E in West Nile anymore. There's the Zika virus, which is very concerning. So I, I will second that motion.
All those in favor, please say aye. Christine, I like the tabs, by the way. I wonder why Mr. Miller's asking for them all along.
Moves things forward.
Next we have the appointment of election officers for the primary on March 1st. Town clerk has prepared a list of election officers to work at the polls. Everybody have a chance to review those?
Move approval is written.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ananamous. Under old business, we have the development agreement payment related to the clapboard tree in the Hutton Street intersection.
It's just FYI, do we need to approve?
Yeah, if you have questions, I mean, I'll, I'll drive it warm. I'll be able to answer better than me.
FYI, shouldn't be done as FYI now.
It's just, yeah, it's just to let you know that we've received all the payments for benchmark debate.
I couldn't tell if it had all been received, because I know the last one says, is, this is, satisfies our full obligation. So that's why I didn't know if they'd received all, all of the money.
So the first two, $125,000 to the town for the cart cut permit, $125,000, sorry, $125,000.
Yep. All came in at the time? They've already come in?
Yeah.
All right, so this is the final payment?
Mm-hmm. And then similar to, I guess, Westwood Marketplace Holdings.
Yep.
Other obligation.
Was clapboard tree and, yeah.
The board talked about not using it for clapboard in Manhattan, using it for another location, and this was the location. And they agreed, and they agreed. And just said the check. This is great.
So do we know when any work is gonna be done at that intersection now?
It's still in design.
Okay.
It won't be this construction season. I believe it will be.
Next year.
I think it, I don't know if there was much discussion to get them to agree, but I'm really glad they did. And this makes a lot more sense.
I think so, it's one of the things. The only, we discussed the amount. That was the only discussion that was set.
Okay.
So we all agreed that this would be better than putting money towards the intersection. Improvements may or may not work. This one, we know the improvements are valid. And it's the same traffic flow that we're trying to assist because of the University Station project. So it's appropriate for the funds to be transferred to this intersection.
So do we need, no. Need a motion? Okay. Moving along, we have to review the annual town meeting warrant articles.
What's there to review?
So.
Two that are being removed.
You're gonna have, yeah, so the first one is the property transfers in Islington, which Nora has reviewed with the Islington Center Task Force. And they're in their review for requests for proposals in the next few weeks. So they're not coming back in until late March.
At, at best.
At best, yeah.
We'll be lucky if we get this on the fall agenda.
Right.
So there's no reason to move forward with that article. And then the home rule petition to enforce double polls, we did a lot of research into in drafting it. And then we came upon.
Yeah, the MMA.
The MMA Modernization Municipal.
Municipal Modernization Act?
Yes.
MMA, yes.
Actually has this in it to give us authority. So we would have to just come up with a bylaw rather than go into the home rule petition.
Oh, yes.
So we'd rather pull this, watch that, see how that falls in place, and then come back post with the fall, maybe even the spring, and probably draft up a bylaw for us to be able to enforce this.
Yep.
I move that we remove these two.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then just in your packets are just sort of the first draft of some of the articles that we have at this point. If you have any questions. Anything that's highlighted is in at least draft form. Town councils reviewing. Pretty much the department heads are reviewing theirs. And then the financial ones are usually set off for the March 28th, the second final public hearing. So we'll have those drafted closer to that date. If you have any questions or you want to move anything around.
Well, Pam's gonna work on the order.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is not, this is not presenting at town meeting. This is more so for the March 7th public hearing. The first bunch will probably go forward. And then the March 28th public hearing, all the financial ones will be on that one, plus maybe one or two others. But we're in pretty good shape at this point.
Any questions? Mrs. Hyde? Okay, thank you. Approval of minutes.
Somebody's using a new font.
I am. It's a.
Wow, you notice everything, Nancy.
You like it?
I just said somebody's using a new font. I didn't.
It actually.
Oh, she's asking now if you like it, if you don't like it.
It actually cuts down on the amount of paper. It's a little bit smaller. If you don't like it, I can switch back. It's just kind of.
I make a motion that we approve the January 20th meetings as written.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. I move that we approve the February 1st meeting as written.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Move that we approve the February 10th minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are we still going into without Mike?
We don't have any reason to.
You might.
This is supposed to go into executive session?
Yep.
I guess, I was gonna ask if you have any questions for the public press, but the press just left. Our next meeting will be on Monday, March 7th at 6:30